All right, it's seven o'clock and I will call this meeting of your Alamosa City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and as the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Judy, I'm going to call the roll. Let's see if I can get this corrected here. Judy?
We have a quorum with six people present and Counselor Gillespie has requested to be excused.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda approval. Are there any changes to the agenda? Judy? No? No, I'll entertain others.
Mayor, I would suggest that we pull item 6C8B, the Approval of the Airport Agreement for Transfer of Entitlements Off the Consent Calendar. We should designate who the authorized representative to sign is.
Okay, Mayor, with that amendment, I'll go ahead and approve the agenda as presented and also excuse Counselor Gillespie.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not? Judy?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Council. Next up, we have citizen comment and I've got one card here from Mr. David Mahoney. Mr. Mahoney, thank you for being here. We've got a podium over there. Please tell us your name and your address, please.
Address?
Yes.
Okay. David Mahoney, 189 McKinney. It's in Alamosa County. I understand I have about three minutes. I'll try to be as brief as I can. What I'm here for today is, for years now, we've been having a parking issue where my office is located. We're on 426 San Juan Avenue, which is between Main Street and Fourth Avenue. Couple of years ago, I had a petition passed around and signed by every business on the block requesting that the parking meter lady that comes by and marks the tires stop doing that on that block because we're all working people there and it's a huge inconvenience for every day they mark the tires. Word spreads, people, we go to other offices, everybody knows the tires are marked, everybody has to run downstairs, move their car if it's back up and move forward or move to another spot, maybe go around the block. I have 15 employees in there and it takes anywhere from 10 minutes to half an hour. In the past eight years, we've had maybe eight tickets that the office pays for. There may be an attorney in court who we forget to tell him or he can't move his car because he's doing a motions hearing, something like that. The other thing I had on the petition that I passed around at the time was that there be a handicap designation. Well, that was done when I passed. The handicap designation was put in within a couple of weeks after I passed that petition around, but then I never heard anything else. For a while, they stopped marking tires. We call it marking tires. Tires are marked and it spreads like wildfire everywhere and it's such a waste of time for my office to run down there and, you know, stop whatever they're doing, go move their car so they don't get a ticket on their car. And we kind of have it down to a science because we don't get tickets. So it's not only a waste of time for us, it's a waste of time for the lady going by marking the tires. And, you know, I've talked, you know, Scott, the owner of the brewery and, like I said, everybody on the block doesn't like it and doesn't want it there. And so I'm here, in my minute left maybe, if I'm lucky, asking you to do something to stop marking tires on that block during business hours because most of those cars there are people who are working there on the block. They don't really have anywhere else to park. They mark the tires on the main street too. They mark them in the parking lot behind Penny's. And we're not getting tickets. That's not the issue. The issue is the time it takes all, everybody in my office to go down and move their car. It just seems silly, you know? So I'm here asking for you, for your help because I don't know where else to go. I've talked to the, to the police department and somebody made the suggestion I come here and put my cause before you people.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. We will, staff, is there anyone on staff that might want to follow up on that or would you folks like some time to maybe investigate or find out if there's anything that can be done?
Well, unrelated to the issues brought up tonight, we were dealing with some questions regarding a different parking lot and which spots had a time limit, which spots didn't, enforcement and those types of things. And so we had made some minor changes, but as we were making those, we realized that we need to probably get a better handle on the parking downtown period and evaluate if we want to change the time limits, evaluate if we want time limits for the parking lots or just on the street and then also have a chance to reach out to the businesses if there are going to be any changes. And then finally, if we do keep some of the current time limits, we need to do a better job of also getting the signage because there could be some confusion created by lack of signage. So I think over the next month or two, staff was planning on looking comprehensively at the downtown area. Obviously, when you're looking at on-street parking, that's usually where we have to have a balance of needing parking for the customers that are coming for the downtown businesses. And when we're trying to do economic development, that's what we hear a lot of times about parking needs for customers in the downtown area. I'm not sure if the parking lot, if that's one we would want to remove a time limit and if that would alleviate some of the issues, but before this was brought up tonight, we were planning on taking a more comprehensive view to see where we should have some limits and where not too.
Thank you. Don't we, don't we have a particular parking space for the D, for the district attorney?
Yes.
We had a few spaces identified. What we're going to do instead is do a sticker. That way, they could park anywhere and we're not taking up a space because there could be days they're not there and that's a space then that's not being used. So it could actually give them a little bit more flexibility to park, but it also frees up some spaces if they're not using it. So that's what we're doing.
Thank you, Heather. Councillor Gregel?
I had a question for the city manager. On that public parking behind JCPenney's, is there a two-hour limit on that also or how does, how do the public parkings, how do they work?
I don't have every parking lot memorized, but when Dwayne was taking me around, it seems like there's some that have, some of the spaces have a time limit and then some of the spaces don't have a time limit. That parking lot, just because of the layout, is a little bit more confusing as well as far as what's public and what's private. So that's part of the other reason we want to evaluate it. So I can't tell you off the top of my mind if the whole thing is a time limit or if it's just partial. Dwayne, do you happen to know?
I believe that part of Robert's parking is that it might be some six inches. Half of that is two-hour parking except for a couple of little behind one, I guess, which is all two.
Oh, it is.
All two-hour parking.
There are some that the whole and all day. There are some that the east bank of the parking is two-hour and the west bank is open.
Okay.
I can tell you what will happen is if it doesn't change, we're just going to keep going through our routine of tires are marked and, and keep running downstairs and moving it. That's why I'm here. The, the two spaces are designated in that parking lot. One is for me and one is for the public defenders. Public defenders used to be located downstairs right next to us. They're not now. They're on Main Street. They haven't used that spot for years. I've told all my employees, when they're, when they come back after lunch, sometimes it's difficult to find a parked spot. If that's open, you can use it. I don't care who in my office parks there, but the reality is, I think Penny's uses it more for unloading trucks and storing stuff than we ever do. We don't use it anymore because we used to have a back door to our office. Well, that's been taken away. Those stairs are gone because they put in a cooler downstairs. So it's just too far for most of them to walk.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. I think what we're going to do is we're going to allow staff to study the issue, make some recommendations. You will probably be one of the first that we will let know. Okay?
Mayor, before David, that parking behind JCPenney's, are your employees parking back there?
Only as a very last resort. They usually go around the block two, two or three, four times and if they can't find a spot and they start getting scared that they're going to get in trouble, they may park there.
Okay.
But no one really likes parking there, to be honest.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, staff. I don't have any other cards, so we will move on to ceremonial items. And here we have a proclamation, National Service Recognition Day proclamation. Is there anyone here to receive? Come on up, please. Identify yourself and tell us a little bit about yourselves, please. Podium is fine.
I thought I was just going to smile and take a picture. So my name's Clarissa Woodworth and I'm here, not close enough. Is that better?
Thank you.
Representing RSVP, which is the Retired Senior Volunteer Program from the Mental Health Center. Pat Morgan Lloyd, I think everyone knows her and she's the one I'm really standing in for today, and all her volunteers. And then we also have some mentors that we also utilize through our mentoring program. My name is Amy Skavizi. I'm here representing La Puente Home and the AmeriCorps program that we have there. We have about 25 AmeriCorps members who do one to two-year service commitments with us, so.
Thank you, ladies, for being here. I will read this proclamation and I hope I can get through it.
It's long.
And then we will, as Council, go down and present this to you. The City of Alamosa Proclamation, National Service Recognition Day, April the 1st, 2014. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we challenge, to meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs, and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, supporting veterans and military families, and providing emergency housing and food services, to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters, and whereas natural service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, increasing food security, providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve, and whereas national service participants serve in more than 70,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being, and whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with both through their direct services and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers, and whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars, and whereas AmeriCorps members and Senior Corps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in the future endeavors, and whereas the corporation of national community service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 1, 2014. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Joseph P. Lucero, Mayor of the City of Alamosa, along with the Alamosa City Council, do hereby proclaim April 1, 2014, as National Service Recognition Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city and thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their communities, given under my hand this second day of May, second day of April 14. Is that correct? All right. I will sign this and we will go down and present it to you.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Please join me, Council. Thank you, Council. Now we'll move on to Consent Calendar A. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I just forgot her, didn't I? Probably one of the most, one of the most important people in, in, that helps the city function. Sorry about that, Robert. Thank you. Charlie, keep me in your line.
Thank you. So the district attorney had a lot to say there and that would do, that would be great if you dealt with that because that's one of the hardest things that we have to do, is parking enforcement downtown. And as Amber has already found out, that, you know, a lot of people are not very happy about getting a, you know, a parking ticket down there. If you could help us resolve that, that would be great. But my job here tonight is to introduce Amber Garcia, who are a new code enforcement officer. Since our code enforcement officer, Karen Hobbs, retired at the end of the year, we have been testing for and training a new code enforcement officer. And we, Amber came on board March 3rd. She was already working for the City of Alamosa over at Parks and Rec. She is Valley native. She born in Alamosa. She went to high school in center. She graduated from Adams State University with a Bachelor of Science in Exercise Science. She is currently working on her master's degree in exercise science at Adams State University. Prior coming to the City of Alamosa, she worked for the City of Montevista for seven years as recreation coordinator. Real quick, for the people that don't know what our code enforcement officer does, since Craig Dodd came on board, we started cross-training our animal control and our code enforcement officer. So we have, they work 10-hour shifts, so we have coverage seven days a week. So they split the weekends and they work 10 hours, makes them more available to the public and it seems to be working. But a brief description, including the, the cross-training that she's done with animal control. Basic code enforcement, junked and abandoned vehicles, weeds, snow removal, parking enforcement, graffiti reports, applicant fingerprinting. She's also, they're trained to cover private property, car accidents. That's a new thing that they took on to help the regular patrol officers do. And they help with direct, directing traffic when needing, needy. And she has just finished a modified field training program, which included TASER and pepper spray certification. And we have a funny story about the TASER, but we won't share that here. But when they do TASER training, they are required, it is not hazing, they are required to take that 50,000-volt TASER just like anybody else would. And Amber took that and endeared her to all the other police officers for doing that. And she has just completed a three-day traffic accident investigation class. So she's ready to go out on the road by herself and she's been doing that. She's been doing an outstanding job. I read somewhere where you hire for attitude, we can train the skills. So Amber Garcia.
It's been a pleasure, guys. And thank you very much for the opportunity. I love it. I have, the transition was easy thanks to these guys. It's been a welcoming experience and the meter guys aren't that bad. It's really, they're kittens compared to men's basketballs, probably Heinz knows that. So, but I do have intentions to, you know, go to the academy and kind of follow Christie's footsteps, maybe. So I'm excited about that and I'll try to make you proud.
Thank you so much, Amber. We welcome you to our family here in Alamosa. Council, do you have any comments?
I guess I have one. Are you ready for this? For this position?
Shoot. Not really.
Because as Captain Robert Jackson says, it's, it's a tough position. You know, you're going to meet a lot of people that, especially weeds and
Oh, yeah.
And parking, you already found out, it's going, it's going to be a pretty, pretty tough deal.
For sure. I've got some tough steps to follow in, but I think, you know, if I try to swing them with some sugar, maybe.
Good, good. That's, don't use a TASER, though.
No, yeah. I won't use my TASER. Thanks, guys.
Kai? Thank you, Council. And so we'll move on to Consent Calendar B, A, I'm sorry. Getting all excited here tonight. Anyway, we have the Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting, March 19, Approval of the Minutes for Special Meeting, March the 12th, and Approval of the Minutes of a Special Meeting for March the 24th. Mayor, I'll move we accept, or yeah, accept Consent Calendar A as presented? I, hold off one second. I, we forgot the Approval of the Airport Agreement for, of Transfer of Enti- Oh, yeah, we did take that off. Okay. Good. All right. Sorry about that. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, start voting, please. Sorry, I messed up here. Okay. I keep pushing yes, Jim, but it's not working on me. Give us a minute. We, I think I pushed the wrong button here. Thank you, Jim. Judy?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Council. Next, we'll move on to regular business and this is business brought forth by city staff. This is an update on the city clerk recruitment process and I would like to say that city council has offered a contract to Christie Duarte to become our new city clerk. And I guess I'll just preface that by saying this was a very difficult decision that Council had to make and one that I'm glad we only have to make once in a great, great while. But with that, I'll open up to Council for comment.
Mayor, Christie, difficult decision like the mayor said, but we picked the right person. I'm extremely happy to have you on board. Welcome and I will enjoy working with you.
Christie, I would like to congratulate you as well. I also would like to let you know that we appreciate you being very prepared and confident throughout the entire process.
All right. Well, Christie, well, there's Councillor.
Just want to welcome you aboard, Christie. It was a hard decision. Welcome. We're looking forward to working with you.
Christie, congratulations. We look forward to a long, healthy relationship with you. And learn everything you can at this point in time from Judy because when she's gone, it's almost like fly by yourself. But I know you've got a good, you've got a good staff that can help you and if there's anything we can do as Council, please let us know as well. And our city manager is excellent as well, so welcome. All right. Next, we have city manager legal.
This is the amendment to the ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the county and the airport board for aircraft rescue, airport rescue and firefighting services at the San Luis Valley Regional Airport. We've discussed this in the past, the, the modification to the prior ordinance is adding the airport board in as a party and defining some of the, the particular parameters of training especially and some other costs and equipment maintenance issues. This is the second reading, so I think unless Council has any questions, it's open the matter up for public hearing and then take action.
All right. If Council doesn't have any questions, I'll open the public hearing on Ordinance Number Three, 2014, and an ordinance approving amendment of an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa County, approved as Ordinance 2013-8, for mutual aid in the provision of ARFF firefighting services at the San Luis Valley Regional Airport. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to Council for a decision.
Mayor, if I could make a couple of comments as the representative of the Council on this airport board. It's, it's turned out to be a pretty good working relationship with the group of guys that are running the airport right now because part of them are with the, with the fire department anyway. So it's been something that, that it, it is a good working relationship and we appreciate what the chiefs have done out there and trained, he's trained a lot of the guys to really handle that airport. So it's been a really, a really good deal that, how the chiefs handled it.
Thank you, Charlie. And we really appreciate you being on that board on behalf of the city. We, we realize that working together, we can get a lot accomplished out there and I think that's what this move is all about for us. And thank you, Chief, for all, everything you do on, out there on behalf of the city as well as the county and the fire department. Council? Anybody else?
If there's no further discussion, I move we approve Ordinance Number Three, 2014, an ordinance approving, an ordinance approving amendment of an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa County, approved as Ordinance 2013-8, for mutual aid in the provision of airport rescue and firefighting services at the San Luis Valley Regional Airport.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, start voting, please. Judy?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Council. And now we'll go on to committee reports.
Yes, one item we pulled off.
Oh. I'm glad you guys are keeping track of me today. I went and got a haircut and I think I lost half my brain. I'm not sure what went on there, but, all right, well, we'll go ahead and pull that back on there.
Put it on regulars, yeah. That's something legal.
Legal? Eric?
Actually, I'll probably let Charlie speak to this. He, I assume, I'm sure has a better background in it than I do. Standard-
Standard provision that comes up, the reason we pulled it off was that you need to designate someone as the authorized representative to sign this agreement, whether it be you, mayor, or Heather, as city manager. It doesn't really matter who, but include that in a motion.
Once again, as your representative over at the airport, each year, the US Department of Transportation, the Federal Aviation Administration, gives out a percentage of money to each airport. And what they've done in the past, it's such a small percentage, that they all get together, and they transfer it, and they rotated it. And here, last year, we were able to, I think we got a million dollars, or a little bit over a million dollars from them. And what it does, it transfers all around to each, to other airports. So, this is just one of those deals where they're asking for us to transfer this 150,000 over to the next person that's going to grab, get the basic grant. And it's probably, it'll probably be the mayor signing this.
It doesn't matter who you designate. We just have to have the minutes reflect that some person was designated. So, if Joseph's around to sign it, that's fine. If it's more convenient to have Heather sign it, that's fine.
Well, whatever, you know.
That's fine. Which one would you prefer?
I have zero preference, but, you know, let's have Joseph do something more than just look pretty.
Thank you very much. I think Heather is probably here more often than I am at city hall. She could probably sign it if that's okay with counsel.
Right. And then we just.
She has to do something other than look pretty then, too.
Then, I guess after signing it, we need just to get it back over to the county.
Thank you very much, Charlie. So, that will be accomplished. Okay.
Do we need to make a motion?
A motion would be good.
Okay, on that, I will move that we approve the agreement with the stipulation that is signed, and we appoint the city managers, our official designated representative to sign this contract.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Start voting, please. Just like clockwork. Missing one. Judy?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Now we will go on to committee reports. Anyone have a committee report?
I didn't have one, but have you already related to the committees? Who's sitting on those committees? Or how does that work?
I think everyone has already.
We sent letters to the committees to let them know who is going to be their representative.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of our counselors have already been some of the different meetings, so they know. Thank you for that, counsel. Then we'll go ahead and move on to staff announcements.
With Greg gone tonight, I will go ahead and give an update on the golf board and some of the occurrences that have occurred, that have been happening out there. The board was in negotiations with the previous restaurant owner of Cattails to go their separate ways. They will be purchasing, I believe, much of the equipment that is there, including the tables and those items. And hopefully, they'll move forward. They have also offered to a young gentleman to be the general manager, and they hope to open in April. They are going to start off with a slightly reduced menu, so they can get open as quickly as possible and be in operation for the golfers. And then, I think they plan to try to grow that to better serve the dinner crowd and move beyond that. So, their hope at this point in time is to get everything cleaned out and get the new supplies purchased and in, and hopefully, open in April. They're also working with Judy's office on transfer of the liquor license and those details as well. So, they've been very busy the last few weeks trying to finalize negotiations with Mr. Martinez and identify someone as a general manager to move forward. Is there any questions related to the golf board?
Does that change our relationship with them in any way in the agreement we have with them?
At first glance, no, but we will be reviewing that to make sure. But they had a sublease for the operation of the restaurant. They just won't have a sublease. They'll be actually operating the restaurant.
Okay. And I'm sure Heinz has an inventory list of what we actually own and what they actually own, correct?
Yes, and they relied on that heavily to make sure in those negotiations, they were only negotiating for things we did not own already.
Thank you.
Eric, did you have something to add?
No, I was just going to, our agreement is between us and the golf board. What the golf board does after that doesn't affect our agreement at all. Although, we are pursuant to our agreement, we are to be involved and informed and participate in that.
Charlie?
On those negotiations, who's paying for that equipment?
They are using their own funds, and so that equipment will be owned by the golf board.
Okay. So, we'll have two separate inventory lists, one belonging to golf course, one belonging to the city?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I have another item, but I just want to make sure there's no other questions in regards to the golf course. My other item, we made an announcement this week that for our public works director position, which will become vacant May 16th with the retirement of Dawn, we did a competitive process, and after reviewing the applications and reviewing the interested applicants, we have made an offer to Pat Steenberg. And I think probably at a different time, we'll have a more formal presentation, but we have moved forward in filling that position. So, of the three vacancies the city had, we have two of them covered at this point, and the remaining one for the police chief, we're moving forward and reviewing those applications at this point in time.
Thank you, Heather.
And Heinz, I believe you had an update?
Got a few items for you, some upcoming community events. The email went out late this afternoon, so everybody should have, if you haven't seen it yet, I'm just kind of rehash it over for you. On April 4th, we've got our first annual mother-child dance at the rec center. It'll be from 6:30, 8:30. We'll have a DJ, we'll have punch cookies. It's like the father-daughter dance, but it's just going to be mother-child. So, $5 for the adults, and kids get in free. On April 5th, the Alamos Optus Club has a magic shows at the Ottega Mill School, and that's our annual project to fund our youth eyeglass project. April 9th is the Dog Park Public Forum at the rec center, and that's from 7 to 9. On April 17th, we got informed that the Denver Broncos will be doing a salute to the fans tour. They'll have some players, some cheerleaders there. The horse mascot will be there at the rec center, main gym. That's a Thursday, and it's from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Middle, or toward the end of last year, we had a complaint about not having facilities for people at cemetery during their off-hours. The crews just finished putting in a ADA-certified porta potty at the cemetery. They poured some extra concrete, so entrance and exit to that unit is unobstructed, and it's, we're having it being serviced on a regular basis, just like we do with all the rest of the porta potties. Also, the crews are in the midst of replacing one of the head gates on the ranch, and that serves the area around the cottonwood circle, country club circle, feeds to the slews that goes through number nine, along number eight, and through number seven. So, that should be completed by tomorrow. All I got.
Thank you, Heinz.
I had a question before you leave, Heinz. Over at the rec building, I noticed that on some of the machines that are down down there, do we have some kind of a equipment replacement plan, or how do we work that? Because.
Both. We have, we're replacing equipment. In fact, we've bought a couple of equipment. We're waiting for it to be delivered. Our contractor, who also services the schools and also ASU, they're out of the Springs, and they should be coming in next Wednesday, the new equipment, and also parts to fix what is broken.
Because I noticed two of the treadmills were down, and then I guess the, some of the weight machines were down.
Yep.
So, they come.
They're scheduled to come on a quarterly basis. That's what we pay them for, and they come at a different time for us than they do for ASU. So, right now, they'll be coming in April, next week, next Wednesday's when their drop-off point is for us.
Okay. Thank you, Heinz.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Heinz. Any other, Judy? Thank you.
I have a few schedule reminders for you. We're in the process of getting everybody registered for the municipal league annual conference. I have a good portion of you already set up, but I do need to follow up with Jan and Ty. If you would get me your choice of events is what I need. I've got you. Your lodging is all set, and I know that you're going to the conference, but I need to get your choices of events set up. The, May 19th, CML will be here in this room for a spring outreach meeting. This is a free lunch for local elected officials in the valley. I do need an RSVP from you, because they, even though it's free, they need a registration. So, I've heard from some of you by way of your acceptance of the meeting request. I need responses from Mayor Michael and Jan. Those are all yeses. It's a lunch, it's a lunch meeting on a Monday. Okay. And I think I've heard from Steph. Did you want to go?
I never have.
Okay. Well, yeah.
Would you like to attend?
You may attend if you like. Just let me know. Just let me know. I had floated a question to you a couple of weeks ago about potentially changing the breakfast date with the county commissioners. When you met together last, you agreed on May 19th, and that has been a scheduled conflict for a few people. So, they are available May 12th. And it sounds like, from those of you that I heard back from, that was a good date, but I wanted to make sure before I committed to that. So, May 12th is a Monday, and it would be a morning. It's our turn to host, so if you have a preference on what we do for that breakfast, you can give me some input, or give Christie some input.
What time is that, May 12?
If we, if we go to a restaurant, it's hard to get there before 7:00 a.m. I know it would be easier for some of you if we could schedule it at 6:30. We've done that before and hosted it here and had it catered in, and we're able to accomplish that. So, it's up to you what you would like to do with that.
May 12th works good for me. The earlier, the better.
I'm fine with May 12th, too.
We'll work out the details. The last thing I wanted to point out is a couple of calendar events. I've been negligent in putting my own retirement reception on your calendar event. I think I'm trying to minimize the publicity.
You think you could put that off a couple of weeks?
But it's also for Don Koskile, and so we want to advertise that with you.
It's 4:00 p.m.
April 11th, that's next week, Friday at 4:00 p.m. Your other event that is on your calendar is April 14th, which is a Monday evening at 6:00 p.m. That's your liquor authority training. So, figure a couple hours at least for that, potentially as long as three, starting at 6:00 p.m. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Judy.
Mayor, I had a question for Judy. This coming election, when's the last date if, or that the city can put something in there, or can we put something in there?
You're asking for the November election?
Yes.
You would need to determine your ballot title no later than August. We need to notify the county of our participation. The statute has it as July, but from a practical perspective, we need to let them know by May.
May? It's right on the corner.
And, and this is not budgeted this year for an election, just so you know that.
What would it cost?
It depends on what we put on the election, whether it's a Tabor issue or not. Tabor issues, our cost is about 14,000, and non-Tabor issues, our costs are about 8,000 to 10,000.
They would charge us 8,000 to 10,000 to put something?
For a non-Tabor election.
Even though they're having an election?
That would be our portion of it. It's a pro-rated chair.
Okay. Thank you.
When you say Tabor, Tabor has to do with increase in taxes?
Taxes, debt, and revenues.
And revenue. Okay. Well, counsel, we might have an opportunity during our retreat or events, whatever we want to call it, to discuss those kind of things if we want to put something on the ballot. We think it's important. I know we've been talking about the charter as well, so that might be something that, if we can get, if we can get some information about maybe some changes that we'd like to make, maybe we can do that before that, unless we don't, and then we'll have to wait till the following year, or something like that. But, anyway, thank you. Any other staff announcements? Counsel comment?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the city of Alamosa for sending my wife and I some flowers on the birth of our child. Also, I need to let the counsel know and staff, I will not be able to make the meeting on May 7th, as I have a training in Denver for my work.
If there are no further comments, I will adjourn this meeting.